To order, thank you all for attending. And at this point, Mr. Manager, we have some briefings.
Yes, sir, Mayor and members of council. The first up would be actually Aaron Sutton, because I think Dr. Lindsay had a conflict today. As you know, she has been reporting very reliably for us, week after week, but I think today she actually has to bring Norfolk up to speed on what's going on there with the COVID-19. So Aaron Sutton, our Director of the Office of Emergency Management, is going to handle both Dr. Lindsay's briefing and her own. Aaron?
Thank you, and welcome, Aaron.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council. So I'll start with Dr. Lindsay's brief that she sent me. To date, we have 749 cases. We have released 447 cases, and there are 23 deaths per - to date. We observed a large increase in our numbers over the weekend. This was mainly related to inclusion of reporting from the Navy of cases identified as part of a pre-deployment quarantine process. The cases did not interact with the community. They are included in our numbers based upon deployment address. There have been six focused testing events in the last five weeks, which will continue over the weeks to come. In planning for these events, we are closely - working closely with faith-based leaders and community partners, including disproportionately impacted populations. This allows us to provide education, direct participants to resources as needed, and ensure the proper isolation quarantine of positive individuals and contacts. We are planning a drive-through testing event for the general community on June 26th at Green Run High School. We are continuing to work with long-term care facilities, such as assisted and independent living facilities, to provide consultation and resources in support of efforts to enhance safety for residents in these congregate settings. We conducted a large-scale point prevalence survey testing event at one local facility utilizing the National Guard as a resource for sample collection. Point prevalence surveys involve testing all residents and staff in a facility to identify those affected at a set point in time to facilitate sweeping interventions to control disease transmission. It allows the identification of infected and potential contacts for isolation and quarantine along with other strategies. It enables a comprehensively - a comprehensive distribution of opportunities of infection. Approximately 1,200 staff and residents were tested. We have been exercising this process in other facilities as we support them in creating a safer environment in preparation to move to Phase Two of reopening - Phase One of reopening their facilities. We are working closely with Virginia Beach City Public Schools Nurse Manager to prepare for and meet school opening requirements as it relates to immunizations per the superintendent's memo. The Virginia Beach Department of Public Health Environmental Health Division is responsible for enforcement of some elements of the Governor's Executive Orders. Our primary focus in education is education of food establishments on guidelines and requirements by disseminating information via website, social media, collaborating with the city, and establishing direct contact with the establishments. Environmental health staff are conducting COVID-19 food establishment surveys via phone, the purpose of which is to educate and assess compliance with current operational guidance. The Virginia Beach Health Department appreciates the city's support for businesses and the collaborations we've developed with the Police Department, the Communications Team, and our partners at the Virginia Alcoholic and - Alcoholic Beverage Control Authority. For businesses that do not follow the rules, the environmental health staff take a progressive enforcement approach. Complaints are investigated and opportunities for education to the establishment operator. Public health has investigated and/or followed up on approximately 20 complaints just over the last two weeks, most of which have involved concerns related to indoor dining, patrons or staff not wearing masks, indoor activity in establishments that are not authorized to be open or are authorized for outdoor activity only, crowding, and failure to observe social distancing. All of these elements are under the control and accountability of the management. Specific to the food program, repeat alleged violations or willful neglect of requirements of the executive orders may result in food permit suspensions. To date, the Virginia Beach Health Department has suspended two food permits pursuant to the authority delegated in the Governor's Executive Orders. We will continue to monitor compliance with these mandates and take action as indicated. Finally, we are in the middle of a pandemic of unprecedented proportions and impact. Many unknowns are and will continue to unfold. As we move forward cautiously with reopening society, we are all dependent upon each other in safely navigating these steps. What each of us does is very important. The timing of this has begun to interact with key historic events in our community and our expression of who we are as a society. For members of the community who are compelled to take an active role, I am asking that you also make a conscious effort to take the necessary public health precautions to protect yourself and those you love. If you engage in large public gatherings, try to keep a social distance of at least six feet if possible, and be certain to, at all times, wear a face covering or face shield, which has the added benefit of covering the eyes. These activities are particularly effective opportunities for the spread of infection. Chances in these settings are much higher of encountering someone with an infection which may or may not be known to them. If you have symptoms suggestive of coronavirus infection, please stay away. If you do choose to participate and cannot observe these practices, following the event, I strongly consider monitoring for symptoms and staying away for at least two weeks from household members or contacts who may be at high risk, such as individuals 65 years of older and people who may have chronic health conditions that place them at a higher risk. For updates from the city, city leadership is continuing to transition from response into recovery and working with department directors to develop their reopening plans. Last week, OEM disseminated planning guidance to all departments to help them assess their operations and determine how to reopen. Some key guidance that was addressed: facial covering policy. We, as a city, are working through that. The recommendation of wearing cloth facial coverings when you cannot maintain the required six - required social distancing of six feet and when in common areas or public-facing areas. City leadership, human resources, and legal are developing a formal policy for the workforce. The city is waiting - awaiting shipments of additional facial coverings to provide to all employees in the city. We will provide based on departmental reopening plans as the supplies are available. The Communications Office is coordinating all external communication and facility signage related to COVID-19. Signage with the city's logo is currently being developed for posting across the city to align with CDC guidance. Building Maintenance requests to add barriers or make alterations in public-facing areas and city facilities are being funneled through Public Works Building Maintenance, who is assessing against the departmental reopening plan and priority in coordination with the Occupational Safety Office. Some other key reopening updates: the city childcare program, supported by Parks and Rec, over the last several months, is ending next week on Friday, June 10th. Parks and Rec has received approval from the Health Department and city leadership to begin its summer childcare camp on Monday, June 15th, with 703 spots available per week, which is over 1,000 less than a typical summer. Schools are switching to a Monday-Thursday food distribution schedule starting on June 15th. Though the demand is still high, we've seen a downward trend in the number of meals being distributed over the last three weeks. SNAP applications continue to be processed with 5,533 applications received to date. Libraries and aquarium are continuing to develop their reopening plans to align with the latest federal and state guidance. The PPE ordering, procurement, and distribution continues to be a high priority for the city. We are in the process of making several large orders of supplies, including cloth face coverings, facial coverings, N95 masks, surgical masks, all to support the reopening efforts and to build a 90-day supply - to maintain a 90-day supply here in the city. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions? John, and then Jessica.
If you could, later date, I'd like to know what the pre-COVID baseline was for SNAP applicants.
Okay.
Just like the idea of how much increase we've seen. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Ms. Abbott.
Thanks, Aaron. I'm sorry I missed some of your presentation, but as far as the Monday-Thursday schedule for the food distribution, are they handing additional food out for families that need to be sustained through the weekend?
There's multiple meals packed, but I will get the details for that.
I just want to make sure we're not, you know, leaving anybody vulnerable. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Mrs. Henley.
I've been, you know, asking questions about, particularly about Dr. Lindsay, about, you know, where these, you know, how we're tracking cases and so forth, and I guess with contact track, which is what we do quite a lot. And I know last week she had a map of the city which showed. But have you all, I guess you look at it, have we noticed that there are concentrations in any particular areas? What I'm wanting to try to see is if we have some areas that are more highly infected than others, and if there's what the reason is for it. Have you all gotten into things like that? I mean, I know you're looking at the places where a lot of people live together, but, like nursing homes.
Yeah.
But what about neighborhoods? Are we looking at that?
Across the board, we haven't seen anything statistically significant. I will touch base with her to see if they've identified since the last time that she's presented. But in the challenges, the positive is based on the address of the person. And so that, as I stated in the beginning, the Navy, the address that was used was a pre-deployment base of operation, so it becomes a little muddled. But I know that they are working with - continuing to work with GIS to map cases with community indicators, and I know that there is more information coming on that.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, Aaron, for your continued fine work.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Mr. Leahy.
Yes, Mayor and members of council, the next presentation deals with the revisions to the Public Works Design Standards Manual, and specifically with the revisions to the stormwater regulations and criteria. Phil Pullen, the city engineer, will give the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. I hope all are doing well.
Good afternoon, sir.
Yes, sir. So today I will be briefing the Public Works Draft Design Standards Manual, and we will be asking you for two things in a future meeting coming up in the 16th of June, tentatively scheduled. That is to approve the Design Standards Manual, and the second thing is to approve the changes to the Stormwater Management Ordinance that we've been working closely with the city attorney's office on. That meeting, like I say, is tentatively scheduled for June 16th with a public hearing. So a little history of - I'll provide a little history, put it in context. In 1994, the city council approved the Public Works Specs and Standards. This document housed everything from specs to infrastructure design criteria to policy-type information. The Public Works Specs and Standards were updated several times to 20 - through 2015 Amendment Nine. And now we have developed this more traditional Public Works Design Standards Manual. It's a concise, user-friendly document removing outdated redundant information. The document is more, like I say, of a traditional Design Standards Manual that most localities have, states have something similar to this. It's a living document reflecting best practices and current design standards. If approved, we will be required to come back to city council when we make amendments to this, similar to the Public Works Specs and Standards. The history on how we got here, again, is timeline like I just mentioned. It shows the draft manual was developed, then posted for public review and comment. Public meeting was held. We received 94 comments and addressed them accordingly. We posted an updated draft of the manual along with our responses to the comments, an independent QA report that we commissioned, which we will discuss later. We posted that as well. So we've had an extensive public involvement with this initiative. It began in 2017, the first red box with the public meeting we had with the engineering development community. We've had several meetings with TBA members, another public meeting in 2019, the other red box there. The new design standards were discussed at all the sea level rise meetings. City staff had several informal meetings with the engineering community. So suffice it to say, the engineering community and development community knows about these new standards that are proposed. So what are the major technical changes? They fall in these categories: as-built drawings, stormwater piping, roadway lighting, the stormwater utility fee adjustment, and stormwater design requirements. And obviously, the most significant changes are in that last one, stormwater design requirements. The as-built drawings, now these changes to the as-built drawing spec is standard is primarily associated with stormwater management facilities. We've established requirements to ensure compliance with our MS4 permit. And the designers are going to be now required to certify that the stormwater management facility that they designed was, in fact, built in accordance with the plan. Stormwater conveyance pipe, this is fairly simple. We just now are requiring reinforced concrete pipe in the right-of-way. The previous document allowed other types of pipe, and we no longer allow that in the right-of-way. We're also requiring the CCTV to be performed by the developer and contractor. That's closed-camera inspections of the pipe and in-pipe system that we typically, the city has taken that on, but we're putting that on the contractor and the developer. And TBA is okay with that. They'd like to take control of that process. Roadway lighting, we have gone to LED lighting as a city standard, so that is just codified in this manual. And the stormwater utility fee adjustment program, we've always had this program, but we've simply updated instructions and the application. Also, we made a new provision to allow for a fee reduction for non-residential properties, is in this new manual. So the big item here is the stormwater management, new requirements to design parameters. They fall into these five significant topics of change: modeling, rainfall, sea level rise, tailwater, and groundwater. All five of these topics are supported by science. We've been - we've had - been doing the science the last few years, and we have codified it in this manual. The first one is modeling, and we've come to you guys and made presentations on modeling, so I'll kind of run through this fairly briefly. We've invested over $12 million in extensive stormwater modeling of the entire city. As such, we're going to make those models available to the engineering community for their use in design, and we're going to mandate that they use those. We've - we're using the program SWIM, which is a state-of-the-art software, which is what our models are developed with, so we're going to ask and require the consultant community, engineering community, to use that SWIM program. However, as a result of some comments we received during the process, we are going to allow other software tools to be used on smaller sites, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. Modeling is really not a new thing. It was required in the old requirement of the previous stormwater master plans. We've just updated them and developed more extensive and sophisticated models. So again, with the modeling that you've seen before, we've modeled all 15 drainage basins. As I indicated, basically, the basins were modeled with the SWIM program, with the exception of the Lower Southern Rivers Basin, which we used a program called MIKE, because, as Ms. Henley knows, the wind affects the southern rivers, and so we had to use a different program that accounts for wind. Again, you've seen this chart. The exhibit on the left shows you what our modeling and SWIM looked like in 1990, and on the right shows you what it looks like now, our new and improved, our 2018. You can just see visually how much more extensive our current modeling is. And I will put a plug-in or a note for our staff that have received a lot of kudos and a lot of requests to go speak around the country about this modeling initiative. So I think that's hats off to you guys for funding it and for their work and the consultants' work in developing this. Again, the models include pipes 24 inches and larger. You can see the pictures over the right. That's when we go out and validate and calibrate it to known storm events, such as Hurricane Matthew. From the pictures provided by residents, we're able to determine what the elevation of flooding is at the time of the picture and compare it to the models, and our results show that we're getting within a half an inch of the actual elevation, so that's great work. The models also include a foot and a half and three-foot of sea level rise scenario, so we are incorporating sea level rise. The second design parameter we're modifying is rainfall depth. We commissioned a study with Dewberry to look at rainfall. The study shows rainfall depths are 10% higher than the 2004 publishing of the NOAA Atlas 14. And NOAA Atlas 14 is the national standard for establishing rainfall depths. So the recommendation in the report is that we use a 20% higher rainfall in our designs to account for resilience in the future, and that's what the Public Works Design Standards Manual reflect. The third thing is sea level rise. We have, as you guys are well aware, we've been coming to the - nearing the completion of a several-year initiative. The results are that a foot and a half and three-foot of sea level rise can be expected over 50 and 80 years respectively. So we've incorporated that into the design standard, requiring consultants, developers to include sea level rise in their designs. The third thing, the fourth thing, I'm sorry, is tailwater. This design parameter we chose is how we handle tailwater in the design. You can see the top two exhibits there. They show - tailwater is essentially the starting elevation of the downstream outfall. The top two pictures there attempt to show no tailwater or a very low tailwater, where you see an empty pipe and a channel there where the water hasn't filled all the way up to the pipe, so you have a lot of capacity. The two exhibits below show when you have a higher tailwater, it takes up capacity in the pipe and the entire system. So it's very critical that we establish and use a proper tailwater for all designs. We've had neighborhoods and systems fail because we did not use the proper tailwater. So we are - we're going to be stringent about how we establish tailwater and use the modeling information we have. So to properly determine an accurate starting tailwater, you've got to look at both the rainfall and the tidal surge. I'm sorry, this is a busy chart, but what I'm trying to show here is we did some more - we commissioned some more analysis by Dewberry to determine design tidal elevations for major water bodies in the city. That's shown in the bottom chart, part of it, J12. Second, we had Dewberry perform an analysis to look at joint storm event tidal elevations probability pairs, to determine the controlling tailwater elevation, and we have included that method for designers to use to determine tailwater in our design standards. We think that is the appropriate way to go. The fifth and major change in how we assess is how we assess groundwater. Groundwater, we found, is a - is again, an important factor in stormwater infrastructure design. The old manual did not consider groundwater flow. It only looked at the distance of groundwater from the ground surface. We, however, were requiring the inclusion of groundwater flow in this new manual. An example of a project that failed because we didn't assess groundwater well enough was - or was not assessed well enough was Sherwood Lakes. That was a project that failed because of improper groundwater design. So again, we commissioned a study with Dewberry, and a copy of that report, the cover is shown there, to evaluate this topic, and as a result, they recommended that we consider groundwater base flow in our designs, and that's what our new manual is reflective of that. So as a QA measure, when we completed our manual, we hired a firm to perform an independent analysis of our work. They were charged with doing a couple of things. One was to review the document in detail and make recommendations on any of our stormwater design standards, and second, they evaluated four sites to determine design differences between the old and new standards. This document wasn't - was commissioned for an engineering quality assurance only. It wasn't intended to redo the engineering work, or it wasn't intended to be a - to use as a policy document. It was simply as a engineering document to check our work, if you will. So I'm going to run through real quick what we did with looking at the four sites. We chose four sites strategically, varied in size and drainage basin location around the city, and they're shown here on the map. The first one was the Hilltop Car Wash, a two-acre commercial site on Regent Street Drive. And if you will, if you can look at the exhibit or on your - on your plan that you have in front of you, what you see in red there is what the footprint of the BMP, the stormwater management facility, was in the original design that was approved. The green is the additional footprint of the BMP that must be added on to comply with the new standards. So a summary of this first site shows that the new standards result in about a 60% increase required in both stormwater storage and BMP footprint, which translated into approximately 45% increase in stormwater infrastructure cost. The second one here was a small site, .6 acres, Atlantic Eye Care on Virginia Beach Boulevard. Again, you can see the BMP is over to the right. The green and red lines are the same here because the BMP, which is grass channel and swells, they were same for both old standards and new standards. So again, the summary is, again, no increase in stormwater storage or BMP footprint area, and a resulting no increase in stormwater infrastructure cost for this particular site. Third site, Virginia Aquarium Marsh Pavilion, a 26-acre site used as a zoo garden. Again, you can see, hopefully you can see the red outlined BMP approved with the site, and then the yellow and the green lines are the increased footprint size of the BMP needed to meet the new standards. So the summary there is, the new standards result in about a 290% increase in BMP size based on the new standards, resulting in corresponding to a 46% increase in cost. In the last site, Princess Anne Middle School, again, you can see the red BMPs, and then the blue, green outline on some of them are the increased BMP areas needed to comply with the new standards. The resulting summary of the analysis there shows that about 20, 25, 26% increase in both storage and BMP footprint needed, corresponding to about a 12% increase in stormwater infrastructure cost. So what conclusions can be drawn from that analysis that we did? The first bullet here, I think, is key. The impacts to site development resulting from the new standards are very much site-dependent, and it's hard to draw a direct correlation on site to increase cost for development. A lot of factors go into it, where the site is located, how close are we to the outfall, what drainage basin we're in. So we know it's going to be a little more expensive, design costs are going to go up, but we couldn't draw a complete correlation to size of site to increase in cost. We did see where the impacts of sea level rise were only realized in one of the four sites. Again, like I said, designing costs, we know will be going up because we're asking for additional analysis. And lastly, important point there, the new standards will prevent increases in upstream and downstream flooding for the 100-year event. Again, that's a key point, too. We will attack flooding. Like I said, the QA report that we had the consultant do not only looked at those four sites, they also made some recommendations that aren't on the screen anymore. Three recommendations, they made several recommendations, but these three right here are what we came down and we agreed to incorporate into the document, to - the first one is, we're going to allow the designers for smaller sites, 20,000 square feet of disturbed area or less, to not have to use the SWIM model. They can use another engineering program or some other way. We think that will - they asked for that, and we're giving it to them, and we think that gives them a, you know, it doesn't impact flooding. They're still going to be held to the other design standards, they're just not going to have to use the more rigorous modeling. It will capture a lot of the single-family houses in the North End and other locations. The second item is, we removed the requirement to evaluate over 100-year storm event. And the third thing is, we had fully saturated soils, was just a design parameter that we had in there. We're going to relieve that and not require them to evaluate for fully saturated soils. So the stormwater management ordinance, this is just the - straight out of the code. And this chart here, just basically, these are the four revisions required in the stormwater management ordinance. I've been working with Kay, we've been working with city manager, city attorney's office, and they have the ordinances drawn up for your review coming your way, I think, next week. But these basically, these are essentially the same technical changes that I just briefed. So the transition to the new document, we've worked with planning on this, and site plans already accepted for review can continue under the current Public Works Specs and Standards, but any new site plan must meet the new Public Works Design and Standards Manual. So from a timeframe, we So from a timeframe, we, like I say, we're coming June 16th to council to ask you to approve two things, the manual and the Stormwater Management Ordinance design changes, and then, and there's a public hearing that day. And then in July, required by code, we must submit a letter to DEQ with our more stringent list of technical requirements. What I presented to you today are, in some cases, more strict than what's in the DEQ regulations. And we must submit that to DEQ, that part of the process and in the code. And I'll leave you with this statement from the HR PDC staff person that included in one of their presentations for the Coastal Resiliency Workshop. And I will be able to answer any questions you have, I hope, but I have a good team here of Stormwater Engineering Center folks, planning, and the consultant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Phil. That's excellent presentation. I guess my question is, this applies to new development, but how do we deal with the old development that already exists and try to get them to come to the same kind of standards?
Well, we have a lot of initiatives going on. I might just jump right into one of my folks here coming up, but we have a stormwater master planning going on where we're looking at various strategies to address the flooding that's going on. CJ, you want to maybe talk better about it than me?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you know, we are working on the stormwater master plan update right now to upgrade the master plan for making drainage improvements within the city. When we do the master plan, we are going to incorporate the Public Works Design Standard manuals into the CIPs to make those repairs to the existing neighborhoods so that they will be brought up to the same standard.
But a lot of the development in the city is commercial development, and how are you going to deal with that?
Are you talking about for redevelopment applications?
Yeah.
If they, as it stated on the chart, if the redevelopment were to include a greater-than-10% increase in the impervious area, we found through the modeling, that actually reduces the amount of runoff coming from the site, so it helps solve some of those flooding problems that are occurring. If it has more than, less than a 10% decrease in the impervious area, then they would be required to do the modeling. And those pipes that are on their sites, if they're 24 inches in diameter and larger, are included in our models.
So unless somebody redevelops the property, there's nothing we can do to require property owners who have a lot of impervious surface to improve their, the system? Is that correct?
I'm not sure on the legal aspects of that, but Bobby Tahan can come.
Welcome, Bobby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Yes, Mr. Jones, those developments that already exist, unless there is some incentivization to have them come into compliance with some of these requirements, they would have to be taken on a case-by-case basis as they get redeveloped.
Say that again. I can't make out what you said.
I'm sorry, sir. The, each of the individual, develop, existing, already developed properties, the only way for them to come into compliance is either to incentivize them to come into compliance or for, when they do redevelop, for, that's when they will come into these standards. We won't be going and requiring existing developments to be retrofitted into these standards.
Okay, so the, the way to get existing facilities to come into compliance with the new standards would be to incentivize them, is that correct?
Or if they, if they have an opportunity to redevelop, that, you know, they can weigh their opportunity costs and they can come in that way. So, but yes, there's a, I know there's been discussion on city council and discussing other ways to help people reduce impervious, but it wouldn't necessarily meet, we wouldn't tell them that they had to, there'd have to be some way to figure out how to get them to, to be closer to these standards. But yes, the, the key driving component to enforcing these new regulations is through new development or redevelopment of existing property.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moss.
I'm not going to go into the questions which I've shared with all my peers today because that would take a long time, but I'm not prepared to vote on the 16th unless I have answers to all those questions in advance, and I thank council members as well. Because while as you ref, didn't reference the simulations, so to speak, the case studies as policy documents, you later referenced them as a basis to have confidence in the policy document that we're adopting. So I think there is a nexus between the two, and I think there's some shortfalls in the representative samples that were chosen. But going back to slide seven, we have a number, and I suspect most developments going forward have been HOA-type developments with their own retention ponds, sometimes which they own. And often, we're setting a high standard, and I applaud you for the piping that we're going to have in the public right-of-way, but ultimately, some of these HOAs are kind of small and not the scale. So I'm just curious, is the long-term cost we're placing out there that they can't absorb, and later they come back to us when they have to retrofit? So I'm just understanding why, when, if the piping is going to one of these retention basins, that's where it's going, taking the water to one of these BMPs, why wouldn't we want to have the same life cycle stability on that piping as we would? Or in all those cases in the future, all that piping would always be in a public right-of-way, and we would always would meet this standard?
Most, I think, fair to say, right, Carrie, that it's going to be an easement or, so maybe I misspoke when I said just in public right-of-way. If we're maintaining it, even if it's an easement, we want it to be concrete. So there can be very few cases where they can still use metal and plastic pipe.
Okay, thank you very much. That was very helpful.
Okay, anyone else?
I have some other questions.
Oh, please, go right ahead.
I was going to walk through the brief. I'm on slide nine, and I've always had a problem with, we give a shopping center that puts a big BMP in their place and puts a fountain, and we give them credit, but an HOA that has a huge BMP that was part of the development, they've got costs there, in some cases, why aren't they eligible for a credit? I don't know how that's different than someone else, just being commercial or non-commercial, but they're equally providing property, they've got the land around it, that, why there's not a, a like credit for that? And I don't know about the, the new incentives, but I'd like, is there a matrix that shows what those incentives are and the dollar value? Because clearly, in the end, if any stormwater is leaving the system that we're still living with, then obviously that cost is being passed on to someone else. So I'm trying to understand what cost, what externalities are we passing on to the larger rate base if we keep your fee? I don't like the fee to start with. I think all public, stormwater is public safety, but I certainly don't want to create a new system that pushes the cost off to a rate base, and especially since these are things that they would have to do as a requirement. So if someone's having to do something as a requirement, why are they getting a credit? If they're doing something over and above the requirement, that makes sense to get a credit. But if we're establishing a standard, then why would you get a credit for meeting the standard? Now, if we're saying that makes our property competitively disadvantaged for development, then we got to recognize that and call it what it is, and it eventually is a development incentive, but it's not really a credit. It's something, we want to keep the property competitive for development. I just, it's just, names are important. That's my only concern there, that's just an observation. But in the, but this is something that was in, because you're taking a recommendation finding of the study, Kimberley Horn study, about the 20,000 square foot or less?
No, actually, we came up with that. I'll let, maybe, I'll let my man.
The reason why I ask, in their report, they said under 20,000 feet, which means 19,999.9. Here it says greater than 20,000. Small difference, but you might want to make sure those are consistent. But how did we determine it wasn't 30,000, 15,000, 5,000? How did we pick 20,000?
Councilman Moss, we took the stormwater model, we looked at a 20, we looked at a site, a redevelopment site, whether it was 20,000, 25, we went down as low as 10, and looked at the model to see what the changes in the flooding would be based on what the development would occur. So if it was 20,000 square feet, it didn't have any impact on the hydraulic grade line, the elevation of the water in the system from 20,000 below. Once you started getting 25,000 square feet and higher, looking at redeveloping a site and maybe adding additional impervious, it started increasing that hydraulic grade line in the downstream and upstream systems and having an impact to the system. So 20,000 made a logical place where it doesn't have an impact on the model if it's less than 20,000 square feet. When you start getting above that, and we did only look at it in 5,000 square foot increments, we didn't look at 22,000 or something like that.
So the knee in the curve was 20?
Yes, sir. The 20,000, there was, there was not any impacts. When you got to 25,000, it was about a half an inch impact to the system, so we decided 20,000 was the point to go.
Fair enough, and did you do representative sample on each of the four major water basins?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. That's excellent. Appreciate your good work there.
Mr. Leahy.
I'd just like to add a clarifying, make sure that everybody understands, 20,000 square foot and smaller projects does not mean they don't have to meet all of our stormwater regulations. It means they don't have to use the swim model to model it. They can use other methods that some of the engineers who work on smaller projects find easier. That information is still converted into, and put into our swim model eventually so that our model stays up to date, and these parcels are not exempted. This was just a concession to the engineering community who says we shouldn't strap some of the small engineering firms that work on very small projects with the requirement to get into a fairly large and complicated model.
That was going to lead to my next question. Thank you. Since I, I did understand it, but that does mean you have different levels of fidelity. So when you incorporate data done with a less fidelity model into your larger swim model, how are you compensating for the difference in fidelity of the different software products?
I think I may just have to stay up here, Phil. The, what we're looking at is, when we have a development that's smaller than 20,000 square feet, we would actually input that in the model ourselves. We would take the construction plans, show whatever BMPs they built, we would put that into our master model and be able to bring it to the same fidelity as the rest of our model.
And, thank you very much. And I, I just can't recall this thing, this is on slide 15. I just can't recall from the standard what the, there's a 24-hour rainfall, and then there's a period within the 24 rainfall which is called the most intense rainfall, usually it's a one-to-three hour period. Can you remind me in the model what that intensity rain period was and what the amount of rainfall in that period was?
What, what happens with the model is, is you use for a 24-hour storm, we use a standard distribution, and usually between about 11:45 and 12:15 is the most intense. It's usually about 30 to 50% of the total rainfall occurs during that hour period around the center of the storm.
All right, thank you very much. That was very helpful. I know the one thing you didn't do, and it's one thing, and it's obviously it wasn't designed to do, gets back to the point that Mr. Jones raised, that as we do these, these cost transference and the, and the property that it consumes, which gets back, well, I don't think the middle school was representative sample for a commercial site, it does change, when you look at the capital requirements on the property relative to the return on investment people have to make, it's going to change the, what people are willing to pay for the land, which has an impact on our tax base. And we're already seeing some of that already in some places, just for residential property because of the Chesapeake Bay Act. And while this particular document, we shouldn't change our standard because of that, because we're trying to reduce risk and no one's more into that, I, I do think that someone, I'm not the city real estate assessor, or someone, needs to be looking at the market dimension as we increase the cost of development and reducing the amount of land that can be developed that has a implication on our economic development strategy. That's not here, but I think we have to be, be mindful of that. That's just an observation, but, and I helped. I think the rest of my questions I submitted in, in writing, and I look forward to the answers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Wilson.
This is obviously a pretty big change, and it's going to affect our development community and significantly increase our costs. I'm just really curious, especially in a tighter area like, like the Beach District, and we've got the, the wave project coming up, and that area is really tight as, and planned out. How would this project, how would these design guidelines, or not guidelines, these design, this design program affect that particular project?
We haven't looked at that directly, although I think Randy here is involved in that project. But I will tell you, there's, you know, there's many strategies that can, that can be employed by designers to meet these standards. You know, one of the things is underground storage. That's, in fact, I think the wave site might be using some of that, if I'm not mistaken. I saw a very preliminary plan of that. But underground storage is a way to, to save land and to, but other than that, you know, every site is pretty, pretty much specific on where they're located, where the outfall is, and how it drains now. Do you have anything to add to that, Randy?
Hi, Ms. Wilson. Yes, we are working on the wave, and kind of came up with a unique idea there. I mean, you, you typically hold back to pre-development levels and let the water go off no stronger than that. We're going to hold back even more than that. We're going to hold it on the site, let the storm pass by. There are, there's software now that you can pump the water down before the storm hits, store the water on your site, and when the storm is done, it pumps it off when there's nothing else in the pipes there. So we're looking at unique solutions like that, and to, to answer the others on, on the questions for design, every site is different. As engineers, we're having to look at different things. And Mr. Jones, some of the existing centers, what we're working with staff on is finding solutions to, okay, we've got a problem. We can't go back and tell this guy to do more on his site, but it goes into an outfall. What can we do to address the issue so that it doesn't flood downstream? And we got to look at unique solutions. We can't just put bigger pipes in everywhere. We, we're looking at pumps, we're looking at putting ponds in, we're looking at bio-retention areas, trying to get unique with solving the problem and keeping adequate land on the site, generally going underground. Or in the case of the wave, we may have cisterns, we may store it in the pond, but if it can't go underground, we've got to find somewhere to store it and then put it off at the appropriate time. But, but it's, I've been doing it 40 years, it's come a long, long ways.
So I was looking at the, the last time you had a coordinated meeting and, we had public comments, public involvement, and you had your, your comments, let's see, 8:31, you received 94 comments. What do you do with those comments?
So we had 94 comments that we received. I will tell you, they were mostly, there were very few substantiative. I mean, a lot of the consulting community, they, you know, they pushed us on this, and we came to an impasse on some of these things. But a lot of them were formatting, a lot of them were, you know, how to tweak the model. So CJ did a good job in working with them and addressing them. But we posted all of our comments back online. Now, some we just said, no, we can't, we're not going to address your comment, we're not going to do what you do. But if we could, in some cases, we, they had very valid comments, and we, we rectified those, we rectified the document. So we posted all that on there, along with our QA report that we had from Kimley. That was in March.
So then you met with the TBA several times?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess, you met with them in May?
We met with them in May, yes, ma'am. I believe that might have been, that was, Carrie and the DSC threw a regular, the DSC has a regular standing meeting with the TBA, and I think that's reference to that meeting. Yes, ma'am.
And how did that go?
You want to speak to that, Carrie? Because I was not in attendance there.
Good afternoon. Our May meeting was really an update, providing the TBA community and the building community an update on where we were with the adoption of the standards, making sure they knew that their, the responses to all the questions were published online, as well as this independent report from Kimley Horn. So we've been trying to keep them abreast, making sure they were aware of when the public hearings would be coming up. So that was the, the bulk of the conversation in our May meeting.
Mr. Tower.
Thank you for that presentation. I thought it was very educational and at a level us folks up here could understand. One thing I have a question about is the transition period. Are there, I'm reminded of the short-term rental issue we were talking about there. Are there projects in the pipeline, so to speak, in the broader sense? And did you deal, how did you deal with the transition? I, I've had some calls over the time I've been on council, about a year, from folks who have said they're having new standards applied to them that haven't been adopted yet, and they were on, and I'm just, it raises my curiosity about how you're dealing with transition.
That's a good question. Let me speak to, there's two components to that. One is CIP projects, which fall under my domain. We really... We really haven't set anything in stone on what the cutoff is. Is it a 30% design, 60% design? I'm going to work with my team on each CIP project where it is in the process. If it's, obviously if it's more towards the early stages, we will go ahead and pay and transition to the new standards. If it's towards 90% design and we're getting ready to go construction, we may, we just may not because of the time permitting and trouble. Now, for private development, I'll let Carrie speak to that. I think I said in my presentation that if they haven't submitted yet new standards, if they have, they can stay under the old standards.
In the way the manual is written, they have 30 days to submit. So it's 30 days prior or 30 days after that they can follow the specs and standards. Phil and I have spoken. We're going to use every bit of reason because we understand there are projects that are held up in the pipeline that have had delays, maybe through planning commission or city council trying to get here. So they can apply through a variance through the Development Services Center. We would support within reason if projects need to submit after that 30-day window. It is written in the manual that they have to reach approval within 180 days. Again, if they've been diligent, working with us and timely in their responses, we'll be reasonable to make sure that projects don't have to go back and start over. So we'll be treating things on a case-by-case basis. But I do feel like we will probably see an influx of submittals in the next month or so. But after that, I think things will stabilize out, and we'll treat everything on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Mrs. Henley.
Well, I guess maybe I'm confused. And I was going to kind of ask this question too about, you know, I think we have been applying some new standards, and that's been some of the things that folks have not... But, you know, we certainly don't want to build something if we know that it could be done better and it's going to cost us if it's not done better. And when we are approving a use at a rezoning or something, I think we're wanting it to be done to the best standard that it can be. So how are we going to avoid having something built when we know it's not quite as good it should be? Is that what you're saying, when we're saying that they don't have to build to the new standards?
So to, Ms. Henley, to also add to, an answer to Mr. Tower's question. For the, for anything that's coming through for discretionary approval, conditional use permit, or rezoning that's located in the Southern Rivers watershed, they are required to provide a preliminary stormwater analysis, which holds them to the higher standard of the rainfall and sea level rise. So those that are in the Southern Rivers watershed that you see, or for those that elect to participate in the preliminary stormwater analysis that are outside of the Southern Rivers watershed, they are showing you a design that meets the criteria with the 20% increased rainfall and sea level rise. The, so that is where we may be seeing some people saying that they're getting held to a standard that's higher, but that's because they are showing it to you and showing that as part of their design analysis in order to get support from stat, one staff to meet the comprehensive plan and to also counsel for areas that we know that there's issues of flooding. So that is a portion of where that may be coming from. But we will be honest, there is, in order for us to have the development community utilize the new standards in the whole city for all types of development that require a site plan, these regulations do have to get adopted so that we can start enforcing it, so.
Okay, Mr. Moss.
As I'll be pointing out under council comments today with an example of what we're doing with our existing standards, if we don't enforce, and you're looking to see a classic example of Willis Wayside, it's over two years old of non-compliance. These standards don't mean much. And I know Mrs. Henley talked about enforcement before and how we budget for it. But I think people, unless we have a means that can be shown on how we're going to validate and hold ourselves accountable to enforcement and monitoring, these standards are only good on the first day. Like I always say, corrosion starts as soon as the paint dries, while degradation and performance starts as soon as the system comes online. So I'm interested in seeing the quality assurance plan, our quality control plan that we're going to have that says we can hold, and maybe someone later today can explain the example I'm going to show, where clearly we haven't done a very good job.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one more question. Is there, back to what Mr. DeHaan addressed, when, and it has to do with you too, Phil, so. But when we're doing this plan, and I understand that the plan is basically, at least the way I'm interpreting what you're saying, is that the plan is basically to deal with new development. And, but is there any initiative here to try to go back and deal with development that has already occurred for the purpose of helping to alleviate the stormwater runoff that currently exists in other sections? You're talking about the Southern watershed. I'm talking about the whole city. And I'm concerned that if we're going to deal with this issue, we've got to deal with the whole city. We can't deal with just one section of the city. Is there a plan to deal with that?
Well, that's a great point, Mr. Jones. I think the answer to that is, the CIP reflects a lot of projects that we have ongoing. In fact, I always harken back to the seven major, the big seven that we said several years ago when we had Matthew and, for example, Windsor Woods, the lakes in PA Plaza. We're well into that, several phases of improving that, that whole, those neighborhoods. And so we have the Eastern Shore Drive. We have Chub Lake. We have several ongoing projects, I think, that are going to address, you know, the flooding in those neighborhoods. Now, they may not be, in some cases, like for Windsor Woods, the plaza and the lakes, we're not able to meet these standards. We've already set a standard that's a little bit lower in this. We didn't have these standards, first of all, but we looked at the whole array, and we could not afford the standards up to this. So we set something a little bit lower that's reasonable. So, but that is a very important project that will address those neighborhoods. So, yeah, we do have some of those. And then the work that CJ and the team are doing with the master modeling, identifying some of these other within each watershed, some of the trouble areas that we need to then go attack, we're going to hit it there, too. So that's what I would say to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Mark.
I'll just take one minute. Okay, right now, the plan is, and it's going to develop because of the new standards and everything. We've always had the stormwater utility fee adjustment program. Over the years, we have had businesses come in. They wanted to reduce their fee, so they wanted to look and see what reduction they could get. What they found was the cost of the BMP they would have to build on their site to get a fee reduction exceeded, you know, the payback would be 50 years. So they would say, I'm not going to do anything. So we need to look at the fee adjustment structure and see if we should beef that up. In addition, what's going to happen is now that we have these updated drainage area models that CJ runs, we're going to be able to identify areas where there is advantage to construct or enhance flood storage. And when you do flood storage, you're going to get some water quality benefit out of it also. So I envision when we start to look at the, really use the models to look at the drainage areas, to identify where we can make improvements, we will start, it'll lead us to looking at the businesses in those areas and seeing if there is an advantage to work with them in some way to, you know, help them, you know, increase their BMP or enhance their BMP from a flood control and a water quality perspective. But right now, it's the fee adjustment program that businesses would come in and say, hey, I want to reduce my fee. Now, the origin of the fee adjustment process was when we first started with, in '88, with the stormwater management regs from Virginia, and we instituted the stormwater fee. Developments, developers, they wanted some sort of relief because they had to maintain these new BMPs. So we came up with the fee structure, the fee reduction structure. And basically, you can get up to 50% reduction if you meet the flood, the flood control and the water quality aspects of the guidelines, okay? So that's, that's how that came about. Mr. Moss, quickly answer your question, how come HOAs do not get a fee reduction? Basically, the HOA itself does not pay a stormwater fee unless it's a condo or something like that. It's each resident in that development will pay one ERU. And also, most probably, in most of the subdivisions, the city is responsible to a certain extent to maintain those systems. If there was an HOA that had 100% maintenance on their entire drain system, which would mean it's kind of a private drain system, we would look to give them a fee reduction.
Mr. Moss.
I think this points out why the fee structure is a bad approach. Number one, there's no relationship between the fee you pay and the stormwater that you generate or the benefit you derive from public property for your flooding, number one. But secondly, getting back to the point, and I'll give this, Rosemary Wilson, Councilwoman Wilson, the credit. If you go to a tax base, because it's, and then give people a tax, property tax relief, a resident who decides when they replace their driveway, only the concrete, the street portion, the right-of-way, and gravel the rest, are willing to put a reservation on their property to reduce the impervious surface they can build on over and above the current requirement, we have a lot more residential property than we have commercial property. And if you're looking at from pennies chameleons, or from little bits of inches to lots of homes, you're going to get a bigger reduction in stormwater runoff than we could ever achieve from commercial property. So if we're trying to get the Big Bang Effect, we're really focusing our area where we get the least amount of real reduction relative to the percentage of our land and how it's used. So I think we need to think about what the effect we want to achieve and is the policy that we adopted really incentivizing the behavior that gives us the maximum reduction. And I would suggest that our current approach does not achieve that goal and does not incentivize residences where our biggest gain could be made, especially around the Lindhaven itself, that we're after. So I think it really does deserve a hard look. It shouldn't be overlooked. We should be looking for the maximum effect and focus on the many. For example, the top 25 properties in Virginia Beach, property owners, not properties, is just a little over about $4.6 billion. That's less than 10% of our total real estate assessment, taxable property of $65 billion. So that'll give you an indication where the bigger return on the investment is, is at the homeowner, the residential level. So I hope we take an aggressive look at that, and I think we'd find a different approach would work.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you all very much for a detailed presentation. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, members of council, I'd like to ask Aaron Sutton to come back up. With all we're dealing with now, as of June 1st, we've had the third tropical dispersion organized in the Atlantic as of June 1st. So it's predicted for a busy hurricane season, and Ms. Sutton's going to talk to us about hurricane preparedness.
Mayor and council, hello again. So just to remind everyone, for our average season that we had predicted last year, that was what we saw in 2019, and Dorian was the one that came close to us and spun us up a little bit. So this is for 2020 season. So we are looking at an above-normal season. I'm sure you all have heard that in the, in the media. As of today, Tropical Storm Cristobal has formed in the Gulf. So we're already three named storms into the season and day two of hurricane season. So why are they stating that it is an above-average season? El Nino conditions are expected to either to remain neutral or trend towards La Nina, meaning there will not be the El Nino winds to suppress the hurricane activity. We also have warmer-than-average sea temperatures in the Atlantic and Caribbean, coupled with the reduced vertical wind shear, weaker tropical Atlantic trade winds, and enhanced West African monsoons. So little fun facts for you. But that is part and parcel of what we're looking at for 2020. They do tend to, about the August timeframe, reevaluate their assessment of the season. But the consistent message for this year so far has been definitely above average. So we are planning and we are preparing. So a couple of things to bring you all up to speed. We are updating our emergency operations plan, plans right now, and I'll talk more about that later. Department plans. While we have been busy with other things, most of our departments are working and doing, conducting their hurricane preparedness meetings as well. Web EOC, ArcGIS, and SharePoint are the technology that we use in our response and has been significantly augmented in the last year with the events that we've been dealing with. Exercise and training. We have a very robust exercise and training program. It unfortunately has been kind of on the back burner for right now. But we tend, we will be holding some virtual training through the summer to refresh everybody's, refresh everybody's minds. Obviously, the weather emails were always shared with you, briefs that we do throughout watching a storm, during a storm, after a storm. As you all are very familiar with, we have been fine-tuning our situation reports with COVID. So hurricane briefs and reports will also come to you in very much the same format. And our emergency website, while it was in the planning phase prior to COVID, it has moved forward and, as you all are very familiar with, has been utilized with COVID. One of the things that we did learn was our emergency site was able to show one emergency at a time. We have since realized that we need to be able to show more than one emergency at a time on our website. So that has been updated as well. I tend to keep this from Matthew and hurricanes, the storms that we have had since then, kind of as our benchmark of what we have accomplished and moved towards. Citywide storm preparation continues to, while it was outstanding before, continues to be a much more coordinated event, so much so that even with the road status updates when we do have flooding down south or significant rain events, the coordination between Public Works, Communications, 311-911, and Office of Emergency Management, and the Fire Department is seamless, and the Police Department, so much so that the high-water vehicles move automatically as we move into our forward-leaning position. EOC staffing is always a challenge. Matthew was never more apparent as after about a week of response, everybody went back to work, and OEM and a few straggling departments sat in the EOC for 45 days. Since then, we have trained. We're up to about 25 members of the Virginia Beach Incident Management Team that have members of Fire, Police, and EMS. And actually, through COVID, have been recruiting additional folks to become part of the Incident Management Team. OEM provides them training in planning and logistics so that they can augment the overall Emergency Operations Center staff to provide support when we are in response and recovery operations. Data collection was a significant challenge with Matthew and continues to be. But we have recruited additional departments to provide support and... And with the help of IT, the customer service system is coming up online, which was one of our backbones of trying to collect information from 311 on unmet needs, what folks needed in the community after the storm, and that is moving forward as we speak. So will be available for this hurricane season. We did receive an enterprise license for ArcGIS, so utilizing some of those tools to collect information in the field will also be available this hurricane season. So we continue to increase our availability of getting the data that we need to make those data-driven decisions. Internal and external communication. The Joint Information Center has gotten a significant workout over the last four years, and that process of standing up, working together with multiple departments and multiple communication departments representatives, has become quite seamless, and over the last three months of COVID-19 have continued to work through that. Emergency plans and policies, we are always working through that. And then short-term and long-term recovery. You all are very, I think if you remember, on May 30th, 2019, we did a very large, all-day recovery workshop to start moving forward and doing recovery plans, and you're well-aware of what happened the next day. We've gotten a lot of practice in short-term and long-term recovery, and we continue to fine tune that as we move forward. Couple other things. The city's Emergency Operations Plan, which is posted on the, on the website for anyone in the community to review, and it includes the emergency support function portion of the Emergency Operations Plan. That is currently being updated and will be presented to you, hopefully in the August timeframe, for approval. We are required by state code to update, update that every four years. The hurricane plan is being updated, just to make sure that all the timelines and references are up to date. And the evacuation plan is, is being significantly updated because we just finally received the hurricane evacuation study results that has been going on for almost four years. All departments are working through, I apologize, I left a reference out of there, all departments are working on their continuity of operations plans, especially during COVID, and it also affects, obviously, hurricane planning. Our damage assessment software implementation continues. We, we add additional departments as our plan this year was to add the schools and continue to bring Public Works online. Obviously, that's been postponed a bit with, with COVID. And Web EOC, Mr. Leahy's favorite, favorite system, has gone through significant updates, and we continue through COVID, through hurricane season, through the last year, to fine tune how it works, putting training modules online for all of our staff to be able to utilize it better. Just a couple quick things about the hurricane evacuation study, because I think down the road, as we finish combing through the 475-page document, we will come back to, to present a full response to the hurricane evacuation study. But I just wanted you to be aware, some updates on the, on the evacuation clearance times. If Zone A had to evacuate, 28 hours. And remember, we, we look at from the arrival of tropical storm force winds, so you can see how they progress there. The other thing that they did is they finally flipped the colors to match with every other community on the coast that utilizes this. If you remember, Zone A was blue, the same color as the water, and didn't quite reflect the high, high-risk area that Zone A could be if we had a hurricane that was coming. So blue and red were flip-flopped. So we will be working, we just received this last week, so we are combing through all of that, and we'll work with our communications office as well to move forward. This gives you some numbers here of our zones and the population that would need to evacuate based on the zones, and then our entire South Side, so, so that you have an indication of, of that. Shelters. We continue to work with our schools. We have a great partnership with them in expanding our capacity. Stronger buildings continue to come online. Kellum and Brickell Academy, one of our biggest gaps was over in the Bayside Community for a shelter, and once Brickell Academy came online, that was a significant, a significant plus for us in having shelter availability on that side of the city. We do have our medically friendly shelter, small one dedicated in Kellum, and Kellum is large enough that it is a general shelter and medical-friendly shelter, and then our fieldhouse for our large-scale medically friendly. Pet sheltering has gone around and around several times, started in planning with utilizing our rec centers, which are not ideal, and with our great relationship with the schools, have moved into co-location in a couple of the schools of having people and pets, and have actually exercised and utilized it. And we've established a tiered approach to opening the shelters. We have four tiers of shelters, and helps us to really identify what we need to open going forward for a particular storm. And currently, we have a team that's working with the schools, Human Services and Public Health, a couple other representatives, obviously looking, taking a, a different look at our shelters, is if we have to open them during a hurricane in the time of COVID, taking into account social distancing, the availability of separate rooms if needed for isolation. So we are currently in the process of that to, to make sure we are planning. A lot of information has come out from the Red Cross, from the CDC, from FEMA, as it relates to congregate sheltering, and first and foremost is everyone's safety. Our facilities, our schools are large enough that we can spread people out, but we may need to open additional shelters if we have large numbers. So COVID-19 and hurricane preparedness, these are our challenges that we have. The 10 feet is what's come out with, come out from Red Cross and several of the other agencies. But really looking at a combined approach of non-congregate sheltering and congregate sheltering. So we're taking all those things into consideration, because really, truthfully, our planning assumptions have to include COVID-19 in any preparedness activities that we do. Messaging for evacuation is, is something that we also need to, that we're thinking through as well, because people need to think now what their evacuation route may be, some of the things that they utilize, or some of the places that they stop, or hotels that they go to, stores that they visit may not be open as they leave the area. So we want to make sure that folks are thinking through that. Also, stockpiling up at the last minute. We already have supply chain challenges with some of our key resources, so making sure that people are thinking through their kits now. The one big thing is, more people may need assistance after a hurricane comes through due to current financial hardships. And with that, I want to remind folks, you've heard me speak on it, you've seen and heard from Melissa Zabudas talk about it, our VOAD organizations, our voluntary organizations active in disaster have been tremendous in what they provided for, the assistance they provided with 531, what they're providing now for COVID-19, what we hope that they can provide in hurricane season. But donations are down, volunteers are down. So even our organizations that help assist us in recovery may not be able to as, as much as they have in the past. So really thinking about recovery from a storm may take a longer time than we have, than has in the past. So we really need to think through that with the, with the financial hardships. And one of the other big messages is, is making sure that folks are really staying informed, because the message is different this year with COVID-19. And so with that, I, I just want to remind everybody, thinking about your personal safety, so really understanding your zone that you live in for evacuation, making sure that you are preparing your family and thinking about it now. Our typical hurricane season, and not going wood, our typical hurricane season is in August, that August, September, October timeframe, but really, people need to be thinking about it now. Financial security. As I mentioned, financial hardships may be far and wide here, and, and having cash on hand or the availability of cash on hand during a storm may be a significant challenge for folks in our community, and we need to think about that. The other piece is, obviously, making sure they're doing their insurance checkup. Homeowner's insurance doesn't mean you have flood insurance, and making sure that you're reviewing all of those things. Damage prevention, really strengthening your home, looking around your home, taking stock of, of, of what you have that you may need to either anchor down or remember to move in when storms are, are coming, or if you do have areas where water may pool on your property, what are some options to, to, to help drain it off? And the last thing, and the most important, especially with COVID-19, is really making sure that we're checking on our neighbors. It's a little bit harder. We've been separated from each other for, for quite some time, but as we're looking at storms, monitoring storms, we want to make sure that the community is still, that neighbors are still helping neighbors and checking on each other, because it may be more of a challenge for people to evacuate if they can't afford the gas or can't afford the repairs to a vehicle in order to evacuate. So these are all pieces of information that, that my office and those that are working to plan for this hurricane season are keeping in mind. With that, I will open it up for questions.
Any questions, Mrs. Henley, then Mr. Moss?
Well, comments and questions eventually, but just to make some comments, I think the, the importance of what Aaron is saying to us today just can't be stressed enough. I happened, in one of the many interviews I've, I happened to be watching a week or so ago, was with an expert, national expert in emergency management for natural disasters, and he said his greatest fear has always been a natural disaster during a pandemic. And he was berating all of the governors for nobody doing this planning, and I could only think for myself, yeah, but I know one lady in one city who is on top of this, and that's Aaron, because you know she's been telling us, not only is she looking at the COVID, but don't forget the hurricane stuff. And Aaron has worked with us for many years before she got this present position down in the southern part of the city, particularly with the Senior Resource Center in our emergency preparedness, and this has been something we've been very concerned with over the last 10 or 11 years, that we've had the SRC. But this year, we can't operate the SRC, because it's all the vulnerable people, and they're all the volunteers, and I'm really concerned, because we don't have the vehicle to get the information out that we usually are being, doing at this time, or our, our buddy system that we have, have had all these years. And, and this is, it's really going to make it tough if, when, not if, when we have something that, that comes our way. And the southern part of the city, when you're looking at all of it now, is red, it was blue, but it's all in that zone, that is the, the one that is, hits the evacuation first.
Yep.
We really need to talk on how we can get the word out to people and how we can help people remember all of these things, because we don't have our usual communication lines open at this time, which is a problem with everything. You know, we're not communicating. We don't see each other at church. We don't see each other in the grocery store like we used to. And, and this is a great problem, and I'm really concerned, particularly with our older folks, particularly with our folks in the, in the southern part of the city, who are the older folks, who are spread out, and, and, you know, with the flooding situation that we have and evacuation, we've got, we really need to, to, to work on getting this plan together now. And I, I'm so glad, I was so glad to see you on this agenda, because I've been going to call you and say, help, because we've really got to get back on top of this, and I don't know how we do it. But I'm also glad that now Kellum is also the medically friendly shelter, where it had been Salem, and now it's Kellum.
Correct.
On the smaller scale.
Correct.
Which certainly does help to serve that southern part of the city and the folks. But when, when we know that the older people, who are the most vulnerable in the COVID, are the hardest people to deal with in an emergency such as this, we've got a real double whammy here if we don't get on top of this.
Absolutely.
So I really appreciate the presentation. I just can't stress enough what we, we need to really be out there on this topic with our people, because of being prepared, and because that storm can come up.
Anytime.
I mean, here, we're already on the third one.
Yes.
But thank you so much, and, and we do need to get together and see what we can do to resurrect or to.
Figure out a better approach.
Whatever, whatever we, we can do to, to help people be aware of all of this.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Moss, then Ms. Abbott.
One small request before my question is, it'd be great if you could send us the link to where this 450-page study is.
Okay.
I have lots of time to read late at night, so I enjoy reading.
Okay.
But I'd like to turn to the chart. I'm looking for a, a number on it, but it's the Hurricane Evaluation Study, it's the one with the color codes and says exactly that one. I'm trying to make sure I understand the, on the upper right, and then the thing off to the left. Now, oh, here it says Zone A, and it says it takes us 28 hours to go. And then if you look at B, and I'm not sure then, I'm supposed, is when I look at B on the evacuation zone, B is, the 32,415 is included in the 102,000, correct?
Correct.
So I'm reading that right.
Yep.
So it takes us 28 hours to move 32,000 people, but it only takes us another, what, 17 hours to move another 70,000 people. Something about this incremental lockdown, because as the population goes up, the number of hours to move the people goes down. So, and maybe that's in the report later, but I have a hard time understanding the transit algorithm that makes that possible, or is it that they're assuming that A has already happened, and you're incrementally phasing? Because what, because you said the chart starts at the tropical storm winds, correct?
It, we have to be finished with evacuation prior to the start of, the onset of tropical storm force winds. We don't want people on the road, so.
That means four days out.
We need 28.
That's for A, but if you anticipate, you really have to make a decision.
Yes.
96 hours out from that. And I thought, that's what I want people to understand, because often people, it's hard to convince people.
Yes.
At 96 hours out.
Yes.
What action they need to take. And then at some point in this decision process, it stays in place. And I never forget, was this storm watcher for Katrina, who actually filmed it when it landed there in Gulfport, he said, if you're going to stay in place with a head-on hurricane, you should have three things. A motorcycle helmet, because most people drown after they've been knocked unconscious by debris from a head injury, a life jacket, and then a rope. You know, because those are the three things that, that people generally who survive, because they, because the storm surge, not the, the wind causes the debris, but usually the storm surge waves, it causes head concussions and causes people to drown. So I just think it's important for people to understand how important, when they get those warnings at 96 hours out, that if you stay much past that, you really are committed to stay in place, because you can't get out.
And we have a challenging area to evacuate from, and those are the numbers, and I am happy to share the document. You can read the transportation calculation section and, and see where they came up with all of that.
And I'm assuming that once we have a particular storm, we would be able to put those things into our model, and we would be able to show people that these are the routes and the roadways from your neighborhood, this, and at some point, because of the conditions, those roads just start disappearing off the map.
Correct. And that's why we want to have people on the road ahead of the arrival of tropical storm force winds, so they're not driving in that, and we want to get them out before, before they, they get stuck in those, those situations. But it is a challenge. You've been here long enough to know how, how much of a challenge evacuation is. It's dependent, and this, the evacuation study is based on storm surge, does not take into account surface water or precipitation. So this is a, a singular piece, and that is the piece that's missing from this. But as I said, happy to come back to present more information about the evacuation study and happy to, to share the document with you.
Thank you. You're doing a most excellent job.
Yes, she is. Ms. Abbott, then Mr. Belucci.
Thanks, Aaron. I had a couple questions.
I had a couple of questions about the shelters. Do we have a ballpark idea of what, if in the event we had a serious storm hit, how many more shelters we would have to bring online?
That's what we're working through right now with our assessments, yes.
I'm very curious of that. And then what are the discussions happening with the hospital systems and how we might have to care for people in untraditional ways in the event of a major storm and being, one, getting access to the storm versus trying to navigate the exposure and, you know, being contagious and that sort of thing? Have those conversations initiated yet?
So hospital-wise, they've kept their plans in place and will probably through the, through the summer. The challenge becomes those that we bring into the shelter that may be asymptomatic and carrying, you know, so masks and social distancing will be very important, those going to the hospitals, and we do have a very good relationship with our hospitals, it's why we use Kellum that has closer proximity to Kellum and the Fieldhouse closer proximity to an actual hospital, so we have that relationship there. But they're part of our stakeholders as well as we work through this uncharted territory. We do have some examples that we're talking to our counterparts down in the southern end that went through all the tornadoes and had to shelter folks very closely because you have to get them out, there's no, life safety is most important and we're gonna, we're not going to turn people away from a shelter, we have to keep them in there, but instead of utilizing just the gym and the cafeteria, we may, that's what we're looking at, is expanding out, are we going to have to use some classrooms or extra spaces to spread folks out? And we are working through that right now.
That was what I was curious about, is because I thought traditionally we stayed kind of in the gymnasium and the cafeteria and that sort of thing. And then as far as the messaging goes, my concerns with our vulnerable populations who maybe don't have the same access to traditional media sources like internet or television, do we have any thoughts? I know one of the things that I've been seeing kind of crop up, especially as a lot of the companies, you know, major providers have deferred payments or given payment forgiveness due to COVID hardship, but that's starting to end as we're moving out of being closed, so to speak, and I know of a couple individuals who have stopped their internet service because they just simply can't pay for it. So do we have a strategy for trying to reach those people who maybe can't get a text alert or a email or something to that nature? I mean, obviously, we hope that their neighbors are saying, "Hey, by the way, did you know?" And we are all talking in some ways, but I know that there are definitely people who are, particularly the elderly, who are maybe not getting the same kind of outreach that would normally be happening in normal conditions.
And that's our big challenge across the country that we're dealing with, we can't go out and do our health fairs, preparedness fairs, talk to our civic lead, you know, we're missing all of those, you know, our rotary meet, you know, we're missing all of those things, and the solution is Zoom. Not everybody can use Zoom to, as a substitute. So actually, I've just brought in two interns to help work on some print things and getting back to that neighbors, helping neighbors, and we're kind of in that process right now of figuring out the best avenues to, maybe going back to the old school, traditional ways of, you know, flyer on the door, you know, things like that that we have to work through, and it's definitely, you know, we get, we're so excited to get onto social media and websites and all this stuff, and now we've turned a corner that we may have to take a couple steps back to use some different avenues of communicating.
Well, and if I could just add, I think there's also a saturation issue with social media at this point because people are so online that they're not necessarily looking for it.
Reading everything, correct.
So, but I'm very interested in that, and I would, as you have updates, I'd be interested. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it. Ms. Belucci.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Sutton. I just want to take this chance to, to just say how grateful I am for everything that you and your team are doing and have done and continue to do. It's been a remarkable year for many reasons, and time after time after time, I've had a chance to witness you and the people you work with and your team respond so capably and provide comfort and reassurance in the services that our community desperately needs through a variety of challenges that we face together, even in the short time relative to some of my colleagues that I've been here. So I just want you to know how much I admire that and I appreciate it. But my question relates to a comment that I believe Mrs. Henley made at a previous meeting when we were talking about hurricane preparedness. And of course, I wasn't on council in 2016 when Hurricane Matthew impacted our community, but I did witness the destruction and the devastation of my neighbors, and was on council last year when a storm was approaching, and the, I've spoken many times about the levels of anxiety and trauma and fear that many people were experiencing as a result of this storm approaching. And I don't want to put words in Mrs. Henley's mouth, but I think if I recall correctly, what she, one of the things she mentioned that might be of some great benefit is some demonstration of the work that's been done since 2016 and how it may look different now. And I recognize that modeling is complex and that the conditions for any particular storm won't be the same, but even in the evacuation plan, you know, you indicated today that that doesn't account for.
Rain, yes.
The storm surge, it's storm surge but not rain.
Correct.
But I think, so we have a lot of work to do in terms of flood control projects, in terms of improving our resiliency in that area, in particular in Windsor Woods, Plaza and the lakes, but throughout a number of other places, but also a lot of work has been done. And I think as we begin to approach and move into this season, I wonder if you would consider coming back, or you and some colleagues, in providing some more information about what has occurred, how that, those projects would impact flooding in those parts of the city where those people are experiencing that anxiety. I recognize that we're all, we all remain at risk, and conditions are different and new things can happen, but a lot of good work is happening and a lot more work is on the way and has to continue to happen, and we have to dedicate ourselves to that.
Absolutely.
But I think people who are, that anxiety and trauma is seared into my memory.
Yep.
And I know it is to yours, too.
Absolutely.
And I want to do everything we can to provide information to people so that they will have, be better equipped to respond and to prepare their families and their property for storms that can occur. And I think if you have a chance to share that information, it will go a long way and be very good for our community.
I'm actually going to yield the floor to Mr. Johnson, I think was, he's left, but Mark has planned to.
I'll take this. Yeah, I think it was two weeks ago you made that request, and I think Ms. Abbott also echoed that request, and Public Works is working on that, and you will see it shortly.
Well, I appreciate that and really grateful for it. Oh, here's Mr. Johnson, if he has anything. And I'm just, I'm just grateful about everything that you all are doing, and I know you're just as aware of that anxiety as I am, and I think it will go a long way.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Thank you yet again.
Thank you.
Most appreciated. Okay, we're now ready to move forward with liaison and report and council comments, but Mr. Wood?
If I could, could ask the city manager, I noticed you've got your public safety staff here, if you can give us an update on the civil unrest for the last couple of days.
Steve? Steve Culver, and he'll bring up Chief Sacaro.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Welcome, Steve.
Members of council. So as everyone is well aware by this point, I'm sure, we had, we had some events Sunday evening that I don't think any of us are really, really proud of, and it's a time in our, our country's history, I guess, that's unprecedented. There's some 140 or so cities that are enduring the same kind of heartbreak that we are here. But what started out Sunday afternoon as a peaceful march, if you will, from Rudy Inlet, turned into a, there was some, some violence, some damage, some, thank goodness, some minor injuries, some arrests. We did a briefing yesterday with Chief Sacaro and his staff, along with the mayor, and I'm not going to get into the detail that Tony will on the law enforcement side of the House, but I will just speak briefly, as I kick it off for him, to the unified approach that we tried to implement here in our city, really in a short period of time, on Sunday, as we got information that this event was going to take place in our city. Processes, procedures, our team was, was put together to be able to be in place should something occur. I can't speak enough to my public safety team, I'm very proud of how they operate, how they train, how they prepare, the policies and procedures that we have in place in our city. The presenter that was just up in front of you, Ms. Sutton, that is part of my portfolio, exemplifies how we operate in public safety for your city here. I would be remiss if I didn't thank, take an opportunity to thank the other law enforcement agencies that really, with very, very short notice, responded to the request from our police department for assistance, and that includes the state police, cities of Chesapeake, Norfolk, and Portsmouth. I also am very proud of the professionalism that I feel was displayed by our staff, specifically our police officers, as they were, as they were trying to deal with this event, as things took a obvious turn for the worse towards the end of the evening. What started out as a very peaceful protest, I know Chief Sacaro reached out to the organizers, tried to meet with them prior to the event, he and some of his staff went down to the Loop prior to the event starting. He directed his staff to make sure that the march, the participants had room on Atlantic Avenue, he made sure that the streets were cleared, had staff in place, resources in place to ensure they had the room to peacefully do what they wanted to do that afternoon. That professionalism comes with a large amount of training, a large amount of policies and procedures that have been developed over years, and also the relationships that both the former chief and Chief Sacaro and his staff have worked on for years and years with members of our community. And that, that is, that's something we should all be very proud of, I think, they've worked very hard at that. Obviously, what occurred, I'll let him get into the details as things transpired into the evening on Sunday, but at the end of it, I think we are fortunate in that we had as few injuries as we did, and we had, while we did have some damage certainly, it's, I know it's, I know it's not a small item for our business owners, I got to commend them for their resilience and hanging in there in spite of the pandemic and these other events that have caused their businesses damage. And I also want to thank our Public Works, Mark Johnson and his staff for, in the wee hours of the morning on Sunday, when we, when things were winding down and we realized we had some cleanup to do, his staff was, was there post haste to help clean our streets up and make things as, as best we could for not only our community with our streets and sidewalks, et cetera, but for those business owners that work down there. So I'm, I'm very grateful for the work that all the city staff did, I wish we'd had a different outcome, and so I'll turn the floor over to Chief Sacaro to get into the, his details.
Chief? Thank you, Steve.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Mr. Culver explained, the weekend's events started with a very short fuse, limited advance notification, and that notification came from a community member who was well informed and positioned to one of my leadership teams at about 10:30 in the morning Sunday. That initial notification was that there was going to be a member, a group of individuals gathering at the intersection of Birdneck and Virginia Beach Boulevard near the Food Lion. This is in close proximity in the middle of the SeaTac community. The person that contacted us is associated with the SeaTac community, however, she was not informed prior to, almost immediately before the phone call was placed. The information we had initially is that the, the group was going to peacefully demonstrate, walk from the intersection of Birdneck and Virginia Beach Boulevard all the way to the resort, double back around, and then arrive at the second precinct, which is located at 820 Virginia Beach Boulevard. The demand of the group was to meet with the chief of police and the captain of the precinct. Well, when I got that phone call, it was early afternoon, and as I'm sure many here were doing personal chores around the house, I quickly changed my wardrobe, cleaned up, and arrived at the precinct in time to meet the group. Captain Shannon Wychendall, the commanding officer of the second precinct, had already had a pretty good conversation with the group, a couple of persons identified themselves as kind of the organizers of the group, and they had a good conversation. Once I arrived, they allowed me to address the group, I allowed and permitted and actually solicited some questions. I later learned that one of the members of the group was actually live streaming it on their personal social media, and then we ultimately got a lot of feedback from that livestream. So that all took place about 5:00 or 5:30. About 4:30, 4 o'clock, we got information that a group of protesters were going to descend on the city of Norfolk, they were going to stay in the city of Norfolk and gather and then reconvene in the city of Virginia Beach at 7:57 PM, almost 8 o'clock. The 7:57 has some significance to the group that was associated to this, this organization. So being at the second precinct, armed with this information, we started to assemble a plan as best possible. Again, it was a Sunday, it was late afternoon. So we started to mobilize resources and come up with a strategy that talked about allowing a peaceful protest, allowing them to traverse Atlantic Avenue, and allowing them to exercise their First Amendment free speech rights. I also attempted to reach out and schedule a meeting with the organizer. That meeting was scheduled to happen at about 7:30 in the Loop. I got there about 7:30, and I stayed in that immediate vicinity, looking for somebody to identify theirselves. I've met the organizer previously on several other demonstrations in the years past, so he knows who I am, and I think I can still recognize who he is. Nevertheless, we weren't able to connect at that time. As I monitored my wristwatch and we got closer to 8 o'clock, I attempted to identify the informal or formal leaders in the group. At that point, quarter to eight, 8 o'clock, I would estimate that there was probably 50 to 75 persons in the Rudy Loop area. I approached a couple of people, and I was not able to get any positive traction in communicating and identifying who the leader was. As the group started to traverse northbound on Atlantic Avenue, I was literally, physically in front of the group with Deputy Chief Gallagher, Captain Wychendall, and Captain John Orr were on the east side flank, if you will. We positioned a police car, marked police car, in front with a couple of bike officers to help guide the people's path up Atlantic Avenue. I also had pre-arranged to have all the traffic blocked as far north as we can because of the limited time and the limited staffing, I think that traffic. I think that traffic plan mitigation only went to about 17th or 19th Street. I can tell you, when they started walking, it was a fast pace. By the time I got to about 9th Street, I was already breaking a sweat. I had a difficult time keeping up with them, although I had my work shoes on. I didn't have my running shoes on. But we kept up with them. It was a good crowd. As the crowd moved, the crowd enlarged. We had officers observe large numbers of people parking in the municipal lot, 18th and 19th Street. I personally observed groups of people from 6 to 12 or more joining the crowd from both sides of Atlantic Avenue and also coming off the boardwalk. Persons that were down in the resort, enjoying that summer Sunday afternoon, joined the walk. I share that with you because at some point, the crowd swelled to some say about 700. I don't know what the actual number is, but I can tell you with certainty, it was a large number that spanned probably initially three blocks across Atlantic Avenue. It was a diverse crowd. It was a mixed crowd of race, gender, age, and it was an engaging crowd. They were enthusiastic. But I also noticed several in the crowd that caused me a little bit of a concern. One observation I made was a woman that had a device that was deploying smoke. In a tactical situation, military and law enforcement use smoke in that fashion to detect wind direction because that's a tool to learn when you deploy gas which way the wind's going. As the crowd walked and marched, they chanted, they sung, there was certainly verbal expressions. We followed them. I monitored, and I saw several people, many people, with backpacks. I paid keen attention to those individuals with those backpacks, and I saw several of them reaching into the backpack and drawing out some type of fabric. Most of it was a bandana, and they placed their bandana over their existing mask. Now typically, if we weren't in the middle of a pandemic, the Commonwealth of Virginia prohibits masks in public except for certain exceptions, and a public health crisis is one exception. So typically, when we have demonstrations and people come masked up, that's not a good sign. In today's environment, we took it for what it was as far as the public health situation. The crowd continued up north, heading to an area we weren't sure of. We were concerned, they had a destination in mind. At about 25th Street, the group slowed down. I think some took a knee, others laid in the street, another person laid on that individual's neck, simulating the incident that happened in Minneapolis. Many of us thought this was going to be the termination point. It wasn't. They continued north again peacefully, all the way to 32nd Street, and then made a left to go westbound on 32nd Street. We had received, I say peacefully, but at some point, it didn't, it did not turn peaceful. It did not remain peaceful. We started getting some bottles thrown at us. We started getting some projectiles thrown at us. They traveled down Pacific Avenue, southbound, and the crowd spread probably to five or six blocks. I can say that with some type of certainty because we had our aviation aerial surveillance in the air monitoring the crowd and the traffic movement. As they got towards 11th Street and Pacific, the crowd surged on a police car. The crowd surrounded a police car, and at one point, somebody jumped up on the police car hood and started inciting the crowd. That really created a large spark in the crowd. Simultaneously, there was a large crowd in the area of 5th and Atlantic. They also surrounded some police cars, kicking and screaming, kicking out, breaking out some of the police car windows. Things got a little hectic there, and based on what was happening to include trash cans being picked up off the curb and thrown at us, trash cans being thrown at the storefront windows, bottles being thrown at us, at about 10:30 PM, I declared an unlawful assembly. At that point, we put out an announcement, and we started to prepare to attempt to clean the streets, clear the streets. My primary mission at that point was to preserve life and property. My primary mission was not to go out and try and arrest the criminal element because quite candidly, the bulk of those persons I described earlier were there for a peaceful demonstration and to voice their concern of what's happened in Minneapolis and elsewhere. So we wanted to support that notion. I had staff to support them and literally monitor the movement of the crowd on both the east and west side of Atlantic Avenue, hidden in the shadows, if you will, just in the event if things went, what I would say, sideways. Well, once it went sideways and we declared the unlawful assembly, we tried to clear the streets. At some point, we did have to deploy some tear gas to disperse the crowd. We moved the crowd systematically as best we can with due caution and patience, quite candidly, because as this was a very evolving and dynamic situation, I still did not have ample resources. I personally enacted the mutual aid request as Mr. Culver asked, bringing in the Virginia State Police, the Chesapeake Police, Portsmouth Police, and the Norfolk Police. They responded as fast as they can or could and helped us monitor the street and move accordingly. At the end of Sunday morning, Sunday night, Monday morning, I left the oceanfront at about 5:00. Before I left the oceanfront, I drove the oceanfront, monitoring and taking in the damage, looking at the storefront windows, trying to take a sense and determine what all had happened. At the conclusion of that evening, we had two Virginia Beach police officers that sustained injury. One officer received injury by being hit with a cinder block in the head and neck area, and as that rock impacted him, I think he may have twisted himself and his knee got injured. A second officer injured their ankle, twisted their ankle on some projectile, some damage on the street. Both those officers were treated and released, and in fact, the one officer that was hit with the cinder block joined me later at the command post and sat across from me, monitoring the radio and taking notes. We had a total of five police vehicles damaged, to include the windows broken out and assorted damage to the vehicles by kicking and sticks. We estimated that there were almost 50 stores or businesses that were damaged. Earlier, Ms. Sutton talked about her damage assessment team. She was brought into the conversation and helped us by deploying a damage assessment team, and that's part of our review in this process. So at the end of Sunday night into Monday, we arrested 19 persons. Two of them received felony charges, 16 were misdemeanor charges, and there was a traffic summons. Sunday night, about 21% or four of the persons were from Virginia Beach. Eight were from the Hampton Roads area. Four were from outside of Hampton Roads, and two were from other areas of the country. The demographics of the arrests on Sunday night were about just over 50% African American, just over 40% white, and just over 5% as what we would say unknown. So a combination of Asian and other folks. So we made arrangements to demobilize. We had some conversations regarding steps forward planning. I established a operational period with a leadership team for both day and nights. I made arrangements during the middle of this to call Mr. Stiles, and Mr. Stiles was very gracious to come in Sunday night. We talked about different mechanisms and different tools, and one of those tools we talked about was considering a governor's executive order for a curfew, placing a curfew. I have to be candid, I strongly advocated this with the legal, the mayor, and the city's executive leadership for a number of reasons, and part of my decision-making filter on this was, we really didn't want to wait until we got to a situation where criminal activity was happening, it was rampant, and we had basically lost the crowd, and the crowd went from a peaceful demonstration to criminal acts. The governor's emergency order of curfew gives us a little, gives us an opportunity to use that as an enforcement tool, and in my studies across the nation, and I found working with the Major Cities Chiefs Association, that about 132 other municipalities in the nation have, are experiencing some type of protest. Many are peaceful, some are not. But many of these municipalities have enacted a curfew because they've seen multiple day events. So I made my advocacy based on that. I made my advocacy based on not knowing what tomorrow would present, and that was yesterday. As we moved forward in our conversation, we were very sensitive to managing our staff and managing our message and response. Yesterday was no different. Yesterday, we had information that there was going to be some assembly in the city of Norfolk around Military Highway, and the information was they were going to overtake the roadway at 264. We also were informed via different sources that some of those persons may descend on Town Center. As the timing would have it, our partner agencies again joined us last night, the state police, Chesapeake, Norfolk, and Portsmouth. The Norfolk police convoy actually got impeded and stopped on 264 by the protesters and had to get out to manage the roadway to come to support us. Executive staff and leadership worked with the governor's office yesterday. I signed a letter with the mayor seeking that governor's order. The governor did issue an amended executive order, and that executive order was spoken about in yesterday's media briefing. It was shared with all the news outlets. It was posted on the Virginia Beach website and all our associated social media platforms, and we ensured our officers were told of that in three fashions. One, we crafted a script that our 911 dispatchers read over the radio on all police frequencies. We crafted a training bulletin that outlined the guidance allowed under lawful applying of the governor's order. And then finally, as a leadership team, I demanded that our supervisors, starting at the first line, spoke with the involved officers and explained the key pieces of this executive order was communicating, informing, seeking voluntary compliance, as is our business model of our fair, firm, and friendly. As last night evolved, we saw a group of maybe 35 to 50 people at the intersection of Independence Boulevard and Virginia Beach Boulevard. Almost all of them had some form of a mask. Many of them had signs, protesting signs. Several of them had a backpack. One observation we made was one of the individual had what appeared to be a ballistic plate hanger on his exterior person. Our video operators also saw what appeared to be a handgun being passed between that person and another person. At about 8:30, give or take some time, our officers engaged these persons, explained the curfew order, asked them to voluntary comply with the governor's order, and they declined. They either ran and continued the resistance of complying with the lawful order. Some of them simply said, "We understand," and acknowledged walking back to the car, but several did not. At the end of last night, in the city, we made a total of 34 arrests. 26 of those persons were Virginia Beach resident. Eight of those persons were from Hampton. The individual that I mentioned with the plate hanger, he had in his backpack bottles that appear to have some type of caustic substance. We don't know the composition of that chemical in there, but it appeared to be a caustic substance of some type. He had a set of goggles, and he also had an axe handle. So we concluded the evening out by positioning different assets in and around the high-value areas of the city. State police coordinated an area National Guard unit to come and help us. They were assigned to this area, and they were in Richmond, so once they concluded their training in Richmond, they came our way, and we deployed them around Pembroke Mall, Lynn Haven Mall, and some of the city sites. We got support from the sheriff's office. Sheriff Starley committed 100 sheriffs to us, and we deployed them in a municipal center, throughout the municipal center as a force protection. I share that with you because we had information that there was going to be looting at Lynn Haven Mall. When we got that information, the members of the First Precinct Command, led by Captain Johnny Gandy, reached out to the management team at Lynn Haven Mall, shared the information, and they were, had heightened awareness and were vigilant. Later that evening, mall staff saw, as reported, a number of cars. I've been told that is between 15 and 25 cars. I hadn't seen the actual call for service, but mall staff called the police. The police responded. We responded, read the blue lights, red lights, and sirens and got there, and the officers saw many vehicles leaving the Lynn Haven Mall area. So I think that the last two nights, Sunday and Monday, highlight some of the challenges that we're dealing with. These are, while not spontaneous, they are of a short fuse where we have very limited advance notice to develop resources and develop a solid plan. When I say we don't have time to develop a solid plan, I don't want to leave anybody with the impression we didn't have a plan. We have a plan. We have a practice, and we have a model, and we use that, and our practice, plan, and model is able to address different dynamics that are ever-evolving. We have to be flexible. We have to be flexible, we have to be nimble, and I believe the women and men of the Virginia Beach Police Department and our partner agencies did that. As far as the Sunday night into Monday morning, I hate to use the outcome-based analysis of the damages that Mr. Culver highlighted. But at the end of the day, I think as a community, I would like to celebrate the fact that we attempted to negotiate and facilitate a peaceful demonstration. I think at the end of the day, we didn't have any significant damage, and that's relative, especially if you're a business owner. If I'm a business owner, my storefront gets busted out, that's significant damage. But at the end of the day, we didn't have significant damage. We had some businesses looted, but none of the businesses or none of the city's properties sustained any fire damage. The individuals, Sunday night, were setting fires in the trash cans. They were attempting to set fires on some of the merchandise taken from the stores. Thankfully, we only had the two officers injured. More importantly, we only had one citizen injured, and they were hit as a private vehicle was leaving the immediate vicinity, and they sustained what I would consider very minor injuries, bumps, bruises, scrapes. So while that's not the best of an outcome, it's not a, you know, a perfect outcome. I'm pleased to report that we managed this quickly evolving, very dynamic situation as best possible. Our officers exhibited, in my view, restraint, patience. Before I conclude my remarks, I'm going to ask Mr. Howard, not just yet, Howard, I'm going to ask Mr. Howard to play some video. I tried to capture some video that will give the council just a view of what happened. But I think, at the end of the day, I think we demonstrated our commitment to our core values. I think we demonstrated that we want to ensure the community dialogue and message. And I think we've demonstrated that you've got a well-trained and well-equipped police department. And I would just like to close on this little comment and observation. I've been asked by numerous people, as I've now talked to the members of the Human Rights Commission, I've talked to the executive leadership from the Hotel Motel Association, I've talked to countless persons electronically and on the telephone. And we've talked, we've talked about our call to duty and how to accomplish it. And I think with all the partnerships that we've had in the community, the question comes, what are we going to do now post Minneapolis? And my response is, our business model in the city of Virginia Beach, and specifically with the public safety team and the police department, this has been a long evolution of a professional business model that speaks to training, it speaks to policy, it speaks to workforce accountability. And after the video, I'm happy to help Mr. Culver answer any of the council's questions. So Howard?
Is this the one on 11th Street you were talking about?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, it's Fifth, Fifth Street. This is a vehicle that we got reports on that had various types of equipment, items in the bed of the truck. We observed a privately-owned school bus parked in one of the 100 blocks, handing out water and refreshments. We also got reports of two persons in a Suburban with long rifles shooting. This morning, I spoke to one of the shop owners, and he shared this video. This video depict the gentleman with a weapon in his left hand. The shop owner described it as he's walking down the street with a set of can keys. He shot into the store. He's going to provide us video. This is some active looting of a smoke vape shop, Papa Joe's, that you can see. So that would conclude my direct remarks. I'm happy to support Mr. Culver and any questions you may have.
Mr. Ward?
So, I appreciate the, what, the information that you gave us on that. Just a couple of questions. I know, for example, I know you said that your mission wasn't to go out and arrest a bunch of people, but if people are providing videos of people very clearly breaking into their stores, walking into, through broken glass to take things, and you have good images of their faces, are you searching for those people?
So, I'm glad you asked this question. I neglected to speak to that. Part of our investigative response is going to be the follow-up, where we are reviewing the video. For example, the shop owner with the smoke store has some very good video. I had not yet seen it, that depicts an image of a person's face. The shopkeeper whose business was shot into has similar, very good video. So our plan is to follow up on those videos. There was a red vehicle that was seen on some of the newscasts, going through the crowd and looking like it was going to hit some people. We've tried to identify that vehicle Sunday night. We weren't successful. However, based on the technology, we went back. We found that vehicle in different other areas on the oceanfront with our video technology. We were able to see the driver outside the vehicle. We were able to get a license plate on that vehicle. And at this point, there's an active follow-up on identifying that person because he was involved in a very, what I've called a troubling vehicle drive through the crowd.
Andy Fox interviewed him.
Andy Fox got him.
Say what?
Andy Fox knows who he is.
Well, we'll have to interview Mr. Fox.
Just have to run out to the street and catch him.
Yeah, he interviewed him.
Okay, well, thank you. I wasn't aware of that.
So the other thing is, you also, very clearly, I could see people's faces breaking out the wind glass in those police cars. So I assume you're also going to...
So we're gonna, we're gonna try and identify as many of the individuals from the video as we can. We're looking at the social media videos. Some of the video that we shared here is actually from the social media. And I asked Captain Zales to include it because I think it is pretty compelling video. So we're going to follow up that as best possible.
Okay, any other questions or... Okay, thank you. Okay, Jessica, Ms. Abbott?
Thank you. Chief, I have a question. We, I mean, I'm not sure about my colleagues, but I'm sure they're in a similar situation than I am in terms of, I'm getting forwarded links of different videos from different individuals who are at various points in either Sunday evening or Monday evening. And, as you're aware, the angle of a video can change the perspective of it, and for better or for worse, there are some unfortunate videos that are being forwarded. I would love, and maybe not tonight, but at a future date, for the council to get further elaboration on what the review of these various social media footage is, and the footage that we have at the oceanfront from various, whether it's the business owners of the videos that we have, what that review process looks like. And then I would appreciate, at some point, if you or your staff could come back to us and give kind of an after-action report in terms of, obviously, something went wrong. I'm not casting blame on anybody. I'm just, I would like to better understand what could have improved and what we should be looking towards to facilitating that improvement. Because this is a, this is a, this is a, it's an emotional and hurtful time for a lot of people, and I think we need to be empathetic and proactive. So I appreciate the work that you did, and I'm eager to see how we move forward and move towards more positive, more positive relationships.
So I join you with being anxious and eager. And I will tell you, just from an early snapshot, the video that involves any police interaction, we have a very stern and rigid use of force reporting policy. Many of our officers that were out are equipped with body-worn cameras. So any of the officers that made arrests and had to use any techniques beyond a compliance technique, even if it was just simply contact, there's a formal reporting system, and that's done. I specifically asked for that review. As far as last night's activity, there are no uses of force beyond just a simple contact. So no use of gas, no use of batons, no use of sticks, none of that. But as part of our review process, as our routine business model, we look at those videos as they come, and there's a command review that goes all the way up to the captain of the command, and then goes across to the Internal Affairs Office. Specific to the after-action review, we started those conversations at 11:00 Sunday night, Monday morning. We talked about, you know, several things. We'll do a formal after-action report, as we do in all significant incidents. And we're a learning organization. I'm not here to place blame on anybody, but there is opportunities for us to improve our decision-making, our strategies, and our tactics.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse.
Are we still in council comments?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we're still...
Probably, everyone asks questions.
Okay, okay. The thing, please understand if we can expedite, because we have a heartbreak at 4:30 coming up for the executive session. So, I'll tell you what, if we can get into council comments, you know, quick. Anybody else further?
I haven't.
Yeah, Mr. Moss?
As I told you in advance, I had a number of issues to bring up under, but our liaison report first, and that's next on our agenda.
Okay, if we could just finish up, if it's okay, we'll finish up. Chief, just one point of clarification. The gas was not initially deployed by the, by the police department, correct?
Yes, that's what, we're still tracking that. We have radio transmissions at, just shortly after 10 o'clock, that gas was being thrown at the police. About an hour later, the field commander announced over the radio they were deploying gas. We're doing our due diligence now and trying to cross-intersect the different informations. But initially, I made my comments based on the observation of the officers on the line, that they were experienced getting tear gas thrown at them.
Okay, but I just want to thank you very much. You know, once again, you know, we in Virginia Beach welcome peaceful protests and welcome it, but we want to make sure that people know when they do come here, we're safe. And I thank you in that regard.
Yes, sir.
Okay, at this point, we can move to council comments. And Mr. Moss, Mr. Rouse, and then Mr. Moss, would that be okay?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I think, you know, after hearing Chief Sicario speak, I think one thing we got right, he got it right, is we have a lot to learn. We've got a lot to learn from, from each other. And as an African American, growing up in this city, there's a whole hell of a lot to learn on both sides, right? But as I'm listening to the report about the protesters, and I hear the emphasis placed on the damages that our Atlantic Avenue businesses sustained, and yet I don't hear, you know, the cause or the reason why men and women of all ages, backgrounds, genders are protesting. First and foremost, no one has the right to loot, vandalize, destroy property. So our police will respond in the appropriate manner. But where's the acknowledgement and the pain that African Americans are feeling, not only in the city, but in the state and throughout this country? It's not enough to talk about the broken glass windows, and you don't mention the George Floyd, Sandra Bland, Tamira Rice, Boating John, so many others. The injustices that continuously happen to African Americans, Black Americans in this country. We talk about, we get updates, we get update on hurricane preparations, hurricane preparation coming up, and Erin Sutton always does an amazing job, and we're so lucky and fortunate to have her. We're talking about storms coming up. What about the storm we're facing right now? The storm we facing right now? We talk about COVID-19, which killing African Americans at a higher rate than any other group. Now we're talking about the racial injustices that's happening here, that's happened here, actually in this, in this city, where they sold slaves right down there at Princess Anne Courthouse, not far from here. Why are we not talking about that? Why are we not acknowledging that pain? Because I'm telling you, I'm hurting. My nieces, my nephews, my sons, my daughter, my mother, my uncles, my brothers, my sisters, people that look like me, that walk out their house every single day, is being killed. Killed, and a lot of times, by those who are sworn to protect us. They escape prosecution. And as a council, where's our unity, where's our public comment on that? To acknowledge that pain, or why men and women are protesting? And let's get it right, let's be accurate. I was down there on Saturday. The Black Lives Matter group that I walk with were peaceful and peaceful protesters. That's what I witnessed. If you have other people that work to discredit groups like Black Lives Matter, this is nothing new, this is American history. We've seen that happen to the Black Panther Party. We've seen it happen, they kept wiretaps on Martin Luther King Jr., Malcolm X. So get it right, when you start pointing fingers at who are provocators and those willing to discredit a movement that says, yes, we know and understand all lives matter, but when does black lives start to matter? When does black lives start to matter in this country, to you, in this city, in this state? So tonight, for the formal session, I will not be here. I'm going to stand in solidarity, solidarity with our clergy from around the city that says, yes, again, we value human life, but we also know right now, black lives do matter. I think it was King that said, again, at the end, we will not remember the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends. So when you acknowledge the damage that's been done to our local businesses, which is horrible, especially local businesses, and small business owners who are trying to survive in this economic downturn amidst COVID, when you acknowledge that, make sure you acknowledge the reason why people are protesting. Acknowledge the pain that African Americans are going through right now. Make sure you acknowledge that, and don't overlook that. So when we talk about fining and persecuting people that broke the glass or damaged properties, which we should, they don't stand for, and they don't stand for the reason that people are protesting, and people protesting. They want to be heard. We want to be heard. We want to be valued. I want to be valued. Thank you.
Thank you very much, well said. Mr. Moss?
Thank you. I will try to be mindful of the time, but I did acknowledge earlier, before the agenda was set, that I had a number of issues. Could they bring up the picture, please? This gets back to my discussion earlier that I had about without enforcement. This is the allegedly supposed to be dry retention pond that's at the Willis Wayside site. In the emails that were shared with you a week ago, the Freedom of Information Act email, this thing was identified to be non-compliant in August of 2018. Let me repeat that, 2018, long before there was any application in place... 2018, long before there was any application in place for the redevelopment of the other part of the parcel at this location. No action was taken. Now, you can look at the, could you go to the next picture, please? That's the outfall. You can go to this location, and it is clear, given the substantial amount of aquatic vegetation and the tremendous symphony of frogs at this location, it's fascinating just to listen to them, that this thing probably has never been dry, except when it was constructed. And my point being is, in 2018, they knew it wasn't in compliance, but no action was taken. It's only when this application coming before us or going for the planning commission on 25 June started being looked at, and that wasn't in 2018 of August, much later, that, oh, we have this non-compliant thing. We've inspected it. We found it in non-compliance, took no action in 2018 to bring it into compliance, but now we use the basis for not bringing it to compliance because there's a development that's before us or coming before us, and we should wait to see what action council takes first. I share with you the opinion of the city attorney that this certainly was within the discretion of the city inspector. But it's a discretion that he exercised more than a year later, after it was a non-compliance that they acknowledged in their own emails, a non-compliant structure. I think all of us have to take a hard look before we start adopting regulations, that maybe we are granting too much discretion, or when discretion is known, we get notified that it's been exercised. This went on for what, two years it's been a non-compliance? Now, if what they're true is that this serves only private property and there's been no damage occurred, then why did we ever establish a requirement for a dry retention pond to start with? If it can be wet, deep with water for almost two years, and we're saying there's no impact, what was the added value of having it to start with? These are questions that are unanswered. This is not a proud moment. We need to figure out, how did this happen? What is the after-action report that something could have been identified in non-compliance in August of 2018, and with neighbor complaints, and then no action was taken? Now, you can read what action will be taken. Once, if we don't approve or do approve, let's assume that we don't, we'll have to give them notice and reasonable time, three to six months. That's now going to put us in, maybe it'll be 2021, three years from maybe down before it gets completed. And we have to ask ourselves, is that the, what's happened in other places? One thing I've learned in my work, if you see one thing, this isn't the only incident. This isn't the only issue. So, how many other retention facilities are not in compliance that one we know about and have taken no action? And how many we haven't looked at and taken no action? And what's the cumulative degradation as these people have received the credit for their onsite BNP? So, I mentioned this, because, can you put that picture back up, the big one? Till you see this, and I encourage all of you to go drive by, as easy to get to, you go down Thayer Row, you turn into the Aldies, you go to the back, and there it is. It's not like it's hidden and out of view. So, I think as we adopt these regulations, Mr. Mayor, we have got to have more confidence. And I certainly want to know why it is, in 2018, no one cited these people. But it's only when the development's coming up to do something else, and then that's the reason not to do enforcement, I'm not impressed. But I want to make sure that you've all seen this, and I want the public to know that this isn't something that the council knows about that we tolerate. We do not want that. I don't think the staff really wants that, but I think the staff needs to understand, how did it happen? And what have we done to make sure it doesn't happen again? Couple other points, and I'll move on. I know we're quick. I would like to get a copy of the e-business grant. I know you said it was too much to print, but I'd like electronic copy of that. Also, so you know, I know we have a lobbyist in Washington, but the Federal Highway Trust Fund is up for reauthorization, so I'd like to hear something from our lobbyist about that, so we know where we go. And also, I think all of us would like to know, when June 4th passes from the City Treasurer, just how much personal property tax and real estate tax did we collect? So, we can get that next Tuesday. That information would be nice to know, how many people really did file and pay at the normal time to get an idea of where we stand. If we could get a, when the school board has it available, if we could get a copy of, we restored that $7.7 million for elementary school, middle school, and high school renovations, it would be nice to know where that's actually taking place. And also, when are we going to bring back open mic? We've got open beaches. We've got a lot of stuff open, so I think we should be bringing back open mic. And if not in July, certainly in August, but we should be bringing that back. And I'd like to have something that we're all in agreement with, so we could do it in solidarity. And lastly, in my council liaison report, the Virginia Beach Development Corporation has completed all but six of their audit report findings have been completed. And I'm going to ask them to come in October, when things we've caught up a little bit, and give us a standing where they are financially. I know all the members of council will be interested in the great progress they've made with the help of the state and a strong team. And, but I'd like Mike and I both to kind of see what that is before we bring it, but I'd like them to come back and show you the progress they've made. And with that, I took about five minutes.
Oh, not a problem. Mr. Delahue, do you have a...
We are already scheduled for a update from Alice Kelly on June 9.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Just one very quick comment, just so with everything else that's happening, we don't forget. We did just have a very poignant weekend of remembering a year ago, and I just want to thank those people who planned all of that and put it together. I think it was all extremely well done, very poignant, 4:06 Sunday afternoon. I thought that was a very well-done presentation. Thank you all for doing it. And if you would, I know Mr. Wood explained how we all can continue to make sure we don't forget what did happen and those people by some service. If you could maybe tell us more about that at some other time when we've got more time. But I thought it was all very, very well done and a very emotional weekend for a lot of us. Unfortunately, I think maybe next year, we need to just put a big X on the 31st and say we're not going to have it in Virginia Beach next year.
Okay. But thank you very much. Well-stated. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I recognize that we're running under time, but I feel compelled to say something. Mr. Rouse made it very eloquent points, and I'm not going to even try to build upon what he already stated, but he shouldn't be the only one who says it. And as we have reports about civil unrest and about the tension that exists in our community, we know that our police department is one of the best in the world, and I have the utmost confidence in their work and respect for them. We know the facts show that the use of force here is relatively low, and the complaints about the use of force is even lower than that, especially for a city of our size. But we're asking the police department to stand in front of a situation that faces this country and faces this city. And the responsibility rests upon everyone in this room to take policy, make policy changes that will ease that unrest, that will finally address the disparities and injustices that have plagued our country for many years. And it shouldn't be just upon Mr. Rouse or individual members of this council. It's up to us, those of us who are sitting in this room, to make changes in workforce development, to make changes in policy, to make changes in the way the city does business so that everyone is treated with the respect and the dignity that we all deserve all the time. And I feel that it's our responsibility to acknowledge that. I think it has been acknowledged by many, but I just can't allow Mr. Rouse to be the only person who makes that comment after we just received a very lengthy presentation about the unrest that exists in our community. Thank you for the time.
Yeah, very well-stated. Mr. Tower.
And I agree.
Yes, I do. Yeah.
In the interest of time, I will certainly hold my remarks to endorsing Mr. Berluci's comments, and I would not want Mr. Rouse to leave here today and head that without knowing how deeply, how deeply I feel that we need to heal these wounds and how my own part in systemic racism over my lifetime and what I've seen affects me and continues to, and how great an opportunity we have to make this a better world for everybody here, especially our African-American friends who deserve much, much, much better than they have received from us in every way, shape, and form. And that's obviously without any denigration of any other efforts we've made, but we need to do more, we need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Wood.
Very quickly, also, just really acknowledging what has happened in Minneapolis. Also, to Councilmember Berluci's point about the training and the reputation of our police department, I sent out an email asking that we, as a body, put forth a letter focusing on those areas, so as a body, the public knows where we stand. And I think that's important. And if there's something that I need to do to ensure that that goes forward, happy to do that. But I do think that it's pertinent that we move forward and put out a statement that's inclusive of those details, so that everyone, the community and everyone, knows where we stand as a city.
Yes, and I think moving forward, I think there were great comments made in this regard, and we, as a council, will be unified and move forward.
And maybe, Bobby, you should say something about what you're working on.
Oh, yeah. We're starting to come together with some leaders. I've asked some members of council to be joining. You know, the dialogue will be starting this Friday, and it is going to continue to go, and we will do our best to build those bridges that we need, both as, you know, both as an elected body and as the public coming together. You know, let's find out what we have in common, not what divides us.
Okay. At this point, if we can get into, and I appreciate all the comments, the agenda review.
Okay. Under ordinances resolution, does anybody have any issues with these things going on consent, either one of them?
Just one second. Hold.
And real quickly, to answer Ms. Henley's question, loveforvb.com is where you go for that. Following up on what Mr. Moss said, Lyndon Ramirez won an award for the CDC audit.
Super. On the public hearing, I just want to make certain, even though it's not official or whatever consideration for outreach, that I would be, that issue's one I have staying on because of my connection with Dominion Energy, and this deals with wind farms. I'd just like to make sure that gets covered. And on ordinances, okay, but you got the planning as well?
I'm just ordinance resolution. Everybody okay with items one and two? Okay, so those will be on consent. Okay, and the planning, items one, three, and four have speakers on them. So, item two, Princess Anne District, Martin and June Pernut.
Oh, definitely the consent.
Is that good?
Yes.
Okay. Item five, Codeu LLC Ocean Properties, Rose Hall, Mr. Berluci? Item six, Princess Anne District, Miley and Comnic Residential Kennel Hungarian Road?
Consent.
Okay. And then, item seven in Centerville, Suzanne Nicole Rupp, Travis Chester Rupp for Wildlife Rehab, they're requesting withdrawal. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mayor, I believe, oh, one more item, item eight, the RACAP.
I'm sorry. We have a speaker on that.
RACAP? So, but you, did you want to, somebody mentioned deferring that one based on the information. Did you mention that before, Mr. Tower?
Last week, we agreed to defer. If someone wants to defer it, I'd be happy to hear from them, but I'm not advocating any further deferral.
There was some discussion about people noticing. I'm not supporting it, so I'm glad it's being pulled, but...
Okay. Okay, Mr. Rouse.
On the, obviously, I agree with the items that have... Please let the record reflect that the items that have speakers on there, although I will not be here, I just want to voice my support for them, for the record. The Judeo Christian Outreach Center, I strongly support. The Franklin Johnson Group Management Development, item number three, Security Stores at Van Company of Norfolk, Virginia, for a conditional change of zoning from I-1 industrial to conditional 836, I support that. And then also, I'd like to hear more on number one. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Rouse.
Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following proposal. Proposals: Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. One, Latasha Holloway versus City of Virginia Beach. Two, estate of Jeffrey Tyree versus Colas and Tough Williams. Next, prospective business or industry, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community pursuant to Section 2.2-37A5. Princess Anne District. And finally, personnel matters, discussion considerations or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of public body pursuant to Section 2.2-37A1. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agency, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, can we get the roll?
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember Tower.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood. Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
11 is the round.
Okay, we are in recess going into executive.
We have to.